I'd like to call the meeting of the Pennington County Planning Commission to order. Roll call, Commissioner Coleman is gone and Commissioner Peterson is representing the county board. Approval of the July 13th minutes. Did everybody get a chance to read those? Missed the meeting, so...
I would move to approve as published.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the July 13th minutes as written. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto the agenda. Do we approve the agenda itself first before we talk about the consent agenda? Okay. Sorry. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Still moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as written. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, the consent calendar. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. PJ, does staff wish to remove any items from the consent calendar?
At this time, we're going to do item five.
Item five. Okay. Are there any planning commissioners that would like to remove items from the consent calendar? Okay, PJ, would you read three, four, six, and seven into the record, please?
Sure. PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Item number three is Conditional Use Permit Review 8555 for Jesse and Kendra Kellogg to review a daycare center in suburban residential district. Staff recommends to revoke Conditional Use Permit 8555 with the applicant's concurrence. Item four, Conditional Use Permit Review 1315 for Dan Deo to review a single wide mobile home to be used as temporary residence while constructing a new residence in low-density residential district. Staff recommends to revoke CUP 1315 with the applicant's concurrence. Item six, Subdivision Regulation Variance 1517 for Rodney Alexander Renner and Associates as the agent to waive plating requirements in order to create lots one and two of Tin City Lot MS 2504. Staff recommends to continue Subdivision Regulation Variance 1517 to the August 24, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Item seven, Rezone 1509 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1509. Rodney Alexander Renner and Associates as the agent to rezone 7.615 acres from Highway Service District to low-density residential district and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from Highway Service District to low-density residential district. Staff recommends to continue Rezone 1509 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1509 to the August 24, 2015 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, PJ. Is there anyone in the audience, sir, who would like to remove something from the consent calendar? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar with removal of item number five to the regular agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Onto item five.
Good morning, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item five is Conditional Use Permit Review CU 1317 for Larry Tuber to review an accessory structure without a primary structure. Unless there are any questions, staff just recommended to pull this. On the agenda, it was noted that staff recommends approval with eight conditions. Following a discussion that I had with the fire department later after the agenda was posted, I added a ninth condition. So staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1317 with nine conditions.
Are there any questions?
I'm sure. I'm just kind of curious why review in six months? Just because of the burn situation?
Yes, to make sure that the pile actually gets burned.
Anybody else have a question? I have one. Condition number two states that it is to be burned each winter. There are occasionally really dry winters when burning is not possible, so if you could add the words "if burning is possible"...
When possible?
Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
Cover that. Are there any other comments or question about item number five? If not, Chair would entertain a motion to approve staff's recommendation with the small change to condition number two?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve staff's recommendation for approval of Conditional Use Permit 1317 with nine conditions and the change "if safe burning is possible" to condition number two. Is there further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Onto item number eight.
Item number eight is Minor Plat 1516 for Chelsea Chuck Ferguson to create lot three of Rushmore Cave Subdivision. The surveyor is Hanson Surveying. The existing conditions of this property, it is the balance of government lot four less the right-of-way. It's currently zoned general agriculture district. It's 5.05 acres as it stands right now. It's currently vacant of any structures. It's broken into three separate parcels, as you can see up on the screen. It's the three that are highlighted in red. And access is off of Highway 40 to all three of those parcels. Highway 40 is a state highway and under the jurisdiction of the South Dakota Department of Transportation, so our county highway doesn't have anything to do with the approaches or anything like that. The proposed lot, lot three, would be this portion highlighted here in yellow. It is currently zoned general agriculture district. It will be .914 acre. Due to its size, that lot will either need to be rezoned or obtain a lot size variance. They have since submitted a lot size variance request to our office. Currently, it's vacant of any structures. Again, access would be off of Highway 40 via an existing approach. There is an existing approach approximately right in here. I have been in contact with the Department of Transportation. They have, after this staff report was written, they have told me that that access has been there for a significant period of time, so they will not require that access to be permitted. They are fine with it as it is now. It doesn't have a permit, but it has a long-established location there, so they are not requiring it to be permitted at this time. The applicant has indicated that this proposed lot three is being created in order to be sold. Information provided to staff has suggested that this lot may be used to provide a buffer between the creek and the adjacent property down here marked as tract A, or to provide access to this property via that existing approach. Staff has spoken with the applicant regarding the option of filing an access easement versus creating this lot if they are using it just for access. They have also discussed the option of consolidating this lot into tract A. The applicant has indicated that he does not wish to pursue either of those options. He wants to create this lot, this platted lot as proposed. Staff did route this through the interdepartmental review process. The only comment that came back of significance was county highway did mention that it would be extremely difficult to develop on this lot due to lot configuration and floodplain that is located on most of this lot. So they did say that an access easement should be created instead of a platted lot. However, as I said, we've presented that option and the applicant does not want to do that. So staff's recommendation is approval of minor plat PL 1516 with, I would like to change that to eight conditions, as I did speak with the Department of Transportation regarding the access, and they are fine with it not being permitted, so we can take out condition number four.
Thank you, Cassie. Are there any comments?
I guess, you know, by the time you look at setbacks and setbacks for septic and all that, I mean, is there even any remote chance of this being buildable? And if not, why would we allow it to be plotted as a lot that, and somebody's going to come back in the future, try to build a house, and then claim hardship?
Right.
I guess I'm not sure why they rejected the, you know, roadway easement if it's truly not a buildable lot.
There is some space in the northeast corner closest to the highway that would possibly get a structure in there, maybe not a house, possibly a cabin or an accessory structure prior to a principal. As Cassie said, most of it is covered in floodplain, but that portion closest to the highway is not, and that's also the largest portion that they could build on if they wanted to. The applicant, when they first came into our office, they've changed this at least four times since we've started. And they have, as Cassie has said, several options have been presented to them, and this is the route they wish to go. And to answer, again, to go back to the immediate question, there is some space. They could get an accessory structure. They could do a small cabin with setback variances. So there is possibility...
But you'd have to get setback variances? Because, I mean, by the time you setback from the highway and like you had a septic tank and your separation of the septic tank and...
Yeah.
And even like from state statutes, if they have a well on here, they need at least the acre lot which they don't have.
Correct. The applicant has said once, to me, hasn't said it since, that they are looking in the future to consolidate it in the tract A, but not at this time.
I agree with the comments that it just, everything in here is almost with conditions, you know? And then there's future conditions that aren't even mentioned. It just does not seem like a logical thing to do.
Laurie, can I ask a question? I see on the plat there that there's that lot B also. What's the deal with that? How big is that? Do you know?
I am not familiar with how big lot B is.
Because that looks pretty small, too.
Yep.
It looks from the overhead...
It's developmental, I believe, are they?
Yeah, there's a house on that one. Cassie, is there access to tract A other than through this lot?
There's, there is one right down here off of Highway 40. So the, from my understanding, they were hoping to use this access so that there's a loop in and out of this tract A property.
And leaving it separate does not make two approaches on one lot.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
The thing I think about as I look through this is if someone were to buy this property without knowing all of the restrictions, it almost would seem unfair to create a marketable unit that would be so fraught with factors and conditions that person buying it would almost think they'd been defrauded. Is there any way to ensure that all the conditions that would be attached to this land would be known to a potential buyer?
There's no way to guarantee that.
Are the Ferguson's here?
No.
Is the petitioner, is that the same owner as tract seven?
No.
Or tract A, I mean?
The buyers?
Same owner?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed that?
The larger highway service lot is the buyer, the owner of that lot.
The tract A?
One of the representatives of Rushmore, yes.
Where is Rushmore Cave?
That's the driveway, right across the street, it's about northeast, about 2:00.
Yeah, this is the driveway that goes to Rushmore Cave.
So Rushmore Cave owns tract A, and they're going to buy this, this new lot?
Representative of Rushmore Cave owns it, yes.
Okay. Anybody interested in making a motion on this one?
I would make a motion to deny minor plat.
I'll second that motion.
A motion has been made to deny approval of the minor plat with nine conditions, eight conditions, I'm sorry.
But if you're denying the conditions...
Yeah, it doesn't matter, just to deny.
Yep.
The staff's recommendation. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of denial of the minor plat, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay.
Thank you.
Item nine.
Item nine and 10 are for the same applicants and agents. Item nine is minor plat 1517 and subdivision regulation 1508. To create lot four are of Black Forest Village and to waive plating requirements. The applicant is Jeffrey and Elizabeth Halen, who are not in the audience today. The agent and surveyor, Heald Land Surveying, and there's not a representative from that agency here either. The size of the subject property is .17 acres. It's currently zoned general agriculture. Here is what they're doing in a nutshell. They own the property in red. They actually now own the property in blue. They purchased it from the neighbor to the east because they wanted more buildable space to be able to put up a detached garage. This is a picture of the property up to their house, so if you're standing about the top of that blue line, that's your view. And that's our new signs, aren't they pretty? The roadway to get into the property is, staff measured about anywhere between 12 and 16 feet. It is gravelled. There are no paved roads in this area. There are no curbs. There are no gutters. Because of the significant weather events, this is the road coming in, because of the significant weather events, there are considerable washouts on the road. Spoke with the applicant this morning. He says that he has worked on it over the weekend, is in the process of re-graveling the road. His concerns were the paving, which we'll get to in a little while. There is no floodplain on subject property. The property outlined in red has a single-family residence built in 1973 and onsite wastewater treatment system with an approved operating permit, which is valid through 2017. The property outlined in blue is vacant of any structures. Again, the applicant has purchased the property just to have more buildable space. This plat was routed through the interdepartmental review and no items of significance came back. The applicant also submitted a subdivision regulation variances. One thing to know that the applicant also has a rezone and comprehensive plan amendment in to change from general agriculture to suburban residential, which staff feels is more appropriate for the given area. With that change, then with the plating, the applicant would be required to have a 66-foot wide right-of-way, a 24-foot ride drivable surface, paved driving surface, curbs, and sidewalks. As stated, staff said that the current property, the current driveway, or the current easement, I should say to use the proper term, is gravelled. They're not increasing density with this purchase. They don't plan on building a home on that property or selling it off. At least that's what he was saying this morning. They just want a place to put their cars, because when staff visited the property, there is no garage on that property at this time. So to go through specifically the subregs, they asked to waive road improvements to the existing easement. Again, staff, when staff was out there, the roads were washed out because of the significant weather events that we've had, also through topography, and there is a creek that runs through the property to the north. Staff doesn't have a problem waiving most of the improvements, but because one of the requirements is that it be paved, and in the condition that it is, staff will not be recommending that you waive paving requirements. However, you can go against that. And again, the applicant would like me to stress to you that he was out there this weekend working on the roadway, on the roadway and trying to improve it as best he can with gravelled, and he would like me to reiterate also that there are no paved driveways or roads in that, in that area. The other item that they have asked to waive is to reduce the right-of-way from 66 feet to 12 feet. Again, they're not looking to increase density, and as of now, the 12-foot platted easement seems to be working out just fine. The applicant also asked to reduce the drivable road width from 24 feet to 12 feet. Again, it seems to be appropriate. They're not looking to increase density. The applicant also asked to waive paving, curb, gutter, and sidewalk requirements. Staff is in support of three of those four, just not waiving the paving. Item five, waiving road construction plans. If the planning commission wishes for the applicant to pave the easement, then we would ask that we have road construction plans prior to construction. If you are okay with the gravelled road and with what the applicant has asked me to address to you, because they're in North Dakota and can't be here now, we don't believe that there would be a need for road construction plans for that improvement. The other item they're looking to waive is topography map, the requirements that are in our subregs, and staff does not require that at this time for this approval. In sum, as an analysis, the applicant's request to move the interior lines between the neighboring properties is appropriate. They're not increasing density. The applicant's request to rezone from suburban residential and to amend the comprehensive plan, which you'll hear next, are appropriate. And the applicant's crest to waive most of the plating requirements, staff feels is appropriate. So the recommendation from staff for subdivision regulation variance 1508, staff recommends approval of a portion of subdivision regulation 1508, with the exception of the paved roads.
Thank you, PJ.
There'll be one more after that.
As far as, are the washouts basically depositing gravel on other people's property at this point?
From what I could see, it's to the, to my west. Over here where the taller bushes are, where the most of the washout is, it's actually going down into a creek and a stream. I didn't follow it down to somebody else's property, no. And they do have significant piles of gravel at the top of the hill closest to the applicant's residence, and there were tracks from what appeared to be a bobcat that had been recent use since I was out there.
PJ.
Looks like a perpetual problem, you put new gravel down, but it's going to...
Washout, yep. Highway does not maintain this road, and there is no road district in the area.
Any discussion about putting water bars or something, you know, some other type of control?
As a condition, have the best management practices be implementing during, this is for the plat, that best management practices during construction to prevent sediment and debris from entering drainage ways and/or Prairie Creek. It's a condition of the minor plat.
PJ, could you point out on the overhead view where the stream is? I couldn't tell from looking at it in the...
Let's see if it's even contained in there. Hold on. Well, okay. Oops. Coming right through here. So this is the property, you go down the road, there's some washouts here, and right about where this, the P is on private driveway, is where the deep rutted washouts are. And I'll show you, there's the washout again.
Oh, that is a big washout.
As you can see, I had to drive through this side.
There doesn't appear to be any other paving in this area.
No, and because I couldn't find the property, because an address wasn't posted, I've been all over it, yeah.
It appears that they could put in a drainage basin across that...
Down here.
...solve most of it, which is...
What, put a culvert? A culvert, you mean?
Yeah, well, even a Texas crossing there.
Yeah. Would we require that?
You can, sure.
I just kind of wonder, sometimes paving, it almost makes it worse. You're speeding up the velocity of the water and...
You are, and you have...
Dish cuts get more severe.
You have less area that can absorb.
And the pavement gets undermined. Yeah.
I would like to see some type of improvement, whether water bars or culverts, or otherwise you're going to have a continual washing.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect? Or Bill?
You want to address that in the minor plat under item five? Or add a condition?
Item five is...
Well, it's actually on the same page, page six of seven and page 7 of seven. On page seven are the conditions for the minor plat. Because if you want to waive the subregs, then maybe add it over to the minor plat. But road improvements and all that are under subregs.
Well, the best management practice is probably the good catch-all, but I mean, is it specific enough? Do you, do you think we need to put culverts and/or water bars or get that specific or let them come up with the best management practices?
On the upstream side, which is opposite, of course, of where the washout is, that is level with the road. Then over there where the washout is, it goes down dramatically. I don't, I'm not a hydraulic engineer, I'm not sure how a culvert would, if anything, it was probably speed up the water going down, but they would have to put in a culvert that doesn't really change the velocity of the water. And it may, may help with the retention of the gravel that's there. And again, the engineers on the panel, this doesn't look like it's come down from the upstream side. Looks like it may have come down straight from the road and washed out on the north side.
Off to the right of the photo, is that coming down a ditch line where it's...
I'm going to try and make this work here. Can you say your question again, Commissioner?
On the right side of the photo, in the middle, where it's coming down, is that in the road or is that along a ditch alongside the road?
Right here. I'm trying to make this work. All right, I'm done with that. Right where that little red C is, is that what you're asking?
Well, actually more to the right, where it's actually coming over here.
Where it's coming in from the...
Yeah. I think you got a red dot there.
I think it's just going like this, isn't it?
I see some, yeah, the second red mark.
Yeah, the water's basically coming from this way through here, and it's this area which I think may have come down from here.
Oh, I thought it was going the other way.
I thought it was doing... Lower, yeah.
I thought it was going downhill there.
Hmm.
Feel like John Madden up here. Oops.
Well, in that case, I think some rock checks would be even in the ditch line or flow line would...
Would help.
Would help.
Yeah.
Just anything slow down the water there.
I guess looking for a suggestion, I'll make a motion to waive requirements, including the waiving of the paving if best management practices, including culverts, rock checks...
Water bars?
Water bars. Some are measures they're taking to prevent future erosion.
Okay, we can add that in the five when we get there. Good luck.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is for approval of the subdivision regulations variance request, SB 1508, including the six conditions. Okay, I'm not sure I'm getting this right.
Including paving.
Including waiving the paving requirement with the provision that best management practices, including rock check, water bars, and culverts be considered and implemented if necessary? Is that...
Yes.
...appropriate? That's the motion, and it's been seconded. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Are you including that language in condition number five of the plat?
I would like to see it expanded. That's, I guess, sort of the intent of my motion, is basically, yes, listing culverts, the rock checks, water bars...
Okay.
We haven't got to five yet. The next, staff recommends approval of minor plat 1517 with, and the staff report says following six conditions. However, staff, again, speaking with the applicant this morning, said that he has already purchased the property and will be, has already filed the documents with the register of details. Staff was unaware of that, and condition number one is no longer needed. And staff would like to amend condition number five, and help me with the language here, that best management practices be implemented during construction to prevent sediment and debris from entering drainage ways and/or Prairie Creek through the use of culverts, rock checks, and water bars. How was that made?
Are there measures?
And/or other measures. And with that, then, staff would recommend approval of 1517 with five conditions, with the amendment number five.
Okay, would somebody care to make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve minor plat 1517 with five conditions, right? The fifth condition adding the language about water bars, rock checks, and culverts. Right? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Onto item 10.
Item 10 is a continuation of Halen's request, rezone 1510 and comprehensive plan amendment 1510 to rezone .17 acres, which is the item... 1510 to rezone .17 acres, which is the lot outlined in red, from general agriculture district to suburban residential district, and to amend the Pennington County comprehensive plan to change the future land use from planned unit development sensitive to suburban residential district. Again, the applicants are Jeffrey and Elizabeth Halen. The subject property is .17 acres. Within a .5 miles of the subject property, you have suburban residential, low-density residential, highway service, limited, and general agriculture districts as the current zonings. In the future, land use within .5 miles, you have suburban residential, low-density residential, highway service, and a lot of planned unit development sensitive. The subject property is within Black Forest Village subdivision, which most of that is zone general agriculture with lots ranging in size from 1.07 to .17 acres. The applicant's request to rezone is appropriate zoning for the area and is in harmony with the surrounding land use. The request for comment was sent out for the, excuse me, for the rezone and no items of significance came back. Again, the applicant is looking to rezone from general agriculture to suburban residential and change the comprehensive plan from planned unit development sensitive to suburban residential. That also is routed out through the departmental review and no items of significance came Therefore, staff recommends approval of rezone 1510 and comprehensive plan amendment 1510.
Thank you, PJ. Are there any comments for staff? Chair would entertain a motion to approve both the rezone and the plan amendment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve rezone 1510 and comprehensive plan amendment 1510. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 11.
Kelsey. Commissioners, Kelsey Roush, Planning Department. Before you is a request for your feedback and what you would like to see if you would want us to even go forward with a proposed road naming ordinance or not. Currently, we do not have a road naming ordinance. I think we need something in writing. Right now, we just have an application. There's no fee associated with the application. It can take several hours to do a road naming, but if, I mean, it's up to you if you want us to pursue this or not. I'm at your mercy, so if you have any questions for me. I did include several of the draft ordinances that LaSanne Zeller had put together back in 2012, and it just got to the point where staff became too busy, so the ordinance was basically just stopped for a while. As of right now, we still have that road naming ordinance is still valid. It's number 11-10, so either we would have to restart a new ordinance or, and basically just stop this one. We would...
Well, sure.
Yes, Sig.
The one thing I wasn't clear, you know, there's quite a bit of history here, and then with that was Pennington County road naming guidelines. The one thing I wasn't clear is, are those still gonna remain in force as a proposed ordinance or is the ordinance totally replacing the guidelines?
Right. The guidelines are just part of the application right now. They're just the second page of the application. They wouldn't be in the ordinance. They're changeable, you know, we can take them out. It's basically just something to give the people when they're coming up, how do I name my road? This is kind of the guidelines that you should follow, so it's just a...
But there's probably more detail in there as far as like, you know, hybrid names or, you know, names that are similar but are spelled different or like that, that aren't in the proposed ordinance.
In the proposed ordinance, yes.
Also, the character length.
Yeah.
Kind of brought me up short.
So I guess that's a question I had, is if the guidelines are being, would be being replaced by the ordinance, do you want some of that in there or do you prefer to have it more open-ended?
It doesn't either way for me.
Laurie? Well, don't the guidelines just describe what your staff goes through?
Basically, yes.
I mean, you don't need to have everything in the ordinance.
Right, right.
It just describes the procedure.
I know we've had some discussion this evening as far as proper names or family names and stuff like that, which is in the guidelines, but...
Which we could put in the ordinance. This last draft ordinance is, you know, three years old, and so we could...
Madam Chair?
Yes, Barb?
I went back to my files. I had attended those committee meetings, and the only thing I found in my files that was, were not included in this packet, I asked to have printed up for you. And these are a little bit simpler, what the committee talked about in terms of needs, so I just submit it for your information.
I wasn't in any of those committee meetings, so I don't really know what happened, but...
Right. I don't think you even worked here at that time, did you?
I had just barely started. Yep, brand new.
Which one was it, Barbara?
There's two sheets here, road name signs, subgroup recommendations, and road name sign policy. And I was also wondering if this couldn't be addressed with just policy rather than creating more ordinance.
And ordinance?
And the document, Commissioner, the document dated July 13, 2015, that's just for for information?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Not from the committee meeting a couple of years ago?
Yes, that was from the committee meeting a couple of years ago. Unfortunately, I didn't date it, or these weren't dated when I got them, so... But it is definitely from those meetings.
To answer, I think, one of your questions, Barb, about whether or not we need an ordinance, I think one of the reasons that staff is recommending we do this is that there's no procedure for assessing fees right now for that process, and it's a pretty expensive process, takes a lot of staff time. Isn't that correct?
And it's not just our department that's involved.
Right, yeah, it's emergency management and DOT.
I usually get comments back from Denny Gordon, the fire coordinator, and several emails back and forth between us and the applicants, it just...
Plus a site visit, so I think you said about five to six hours per sometimes.
Probably, yeah.
Sig.
When people start using signs for target practice, whose cost is that and how is that gonna be handled by the highway departments then or, and how frequent, I mean, some remote locations, that could happen a lot.
Right, and signs get stolen quite often. That's part of the, we would like to address that and see if it would be county highway that would, even if they have jurisdiction, for one thing, you know, wherever it's at, if it's in a road district, if it's in a township, so we do need to look into that as well. And we're wondering if we should have all of this in one ordinance, you know, road signs, naming, you know, everything, or should we try and do separate ordinances? LaSanne was proposing to do, to have county highway do their own road sign ordinance, but I don't know if that's, we haven't quite discussed that in the last couple of years, so I don't know what county highway would like to do, but...
It's important to remember that the road signs are there so emergency services can find somebody. That's the main reason.
Google.
Hmm?
Google.
Google is not right.
Yeah, we are in all right, though.
GPS has left me and many a field.
Yes. So we're just looking for some guidance, basically. Do we want to pursue this or do we want to just continue how we have been going and, which is kind of working, but I mean, we also do not have any legal ways to make people re, you know, install new signs if they're gone, so...
Staff's recommendation is to move forward with an ordinance.
Commissioner Peterson?
Have you researched any other areas that have such an ordinance?
Not yet. I've just been waiting to see if we want to pursue this or not. We're pretty busy, so if we're not gonna go forward with an ordinance, I haven't done much research yet, so... I think LaSanne did a couple of years ago, but again, she's gone, so I don't have her as a resource anymore.
The quickest way to succeed is to copy someone who has.
Mm-hmm, right.
And so...
It seems to me that, Commissioner Peterson is correct, that we need to do more research on, you know, what's worked elsewhere in the region, and also to talk with the other agencies involved, just to touch base with them and find out if the county road department has done anything in terms of a road sign ordinance.
We have had, I have had a meeting with state attorney's office, county highway, Denny Gordon from fire, and Ted Rufflett from 911, and they all are on board, I guess, with putting an ordinance together. Before we had any more meetings or anything, we just had one big meeting, and we just, they wanted to get approval from you first before we spent a lot of county time in meetings and stuff, if it wasn't gonna be a...
So what is staff's opinion of the most recent updated draft dated 9/28/2012, which is the last, most recent document you have in the packet?
Have you, I don't think you've had a chance to read it, have you?
9/28, is it we're looking at?
Yeah, 9/28.
Go ahead.
Let's see, I read it last week, but...
Yeah.
I think it's a good start. I think LaSanne, this is her fourth draft, but it only covers road naming. There's nothing in here signage, really signage-wise, so I think it would be a good idea if we were to pursue this, to have separate ordinances, just to minimize confusion for the public.
Now, we're referring to the one that's on page six? It's labeled page six, is that right?
No, it's the very end of the packet.
It's the very last section.
At the bottom, it says six and seven. I just want to make sure we're all on the same.
One through seven. That's the subdivision regs?
That's the amendment.
Okay, where are we then?
Go back a couple pages.
Page one.
For 12, yeah.
On the top right, it would say nine, update draft 9/28/2012.
Okay, yeah, page one, all right.
There you go. I mean, this one's seven pages, but if we added in road sign in, I mean, it could be 120 pages.
There is, there is reference to road signs.
There's some, but there's nothing, let's see...
Under six C A, six C?
Six C, yeah.
Is about the road name signs.
That's just, yeah, for the subdivision regulations area, yeah.
Oh, in...
But that's not, that's not as in-depth as we would need to go. It would need to include the standards for, and the height and the, you know, who is required to post what signs, how many signs, is, who has authority over the signs, who maintains the signs. It would be...
How is this gonna save you time? It's just the fees? This is all about the fees?
No, this isn't all about fees. This is about having something in ordinance that we can refer to if anything happened, if a sign disappeared, like they do all the time, and it's in the middle of nowhere, there's no road district, there's, it's not a county maintained road, who puts the sign back up? Who...
Yeah, and who's gonna inspect this and who's, you know, I mean, it's just, it's, this is just one person's opinion, but I'm so reluctant to see seven more pages added to an already very large zoning ordinance book.
Staff feels that having something in writing definitely helps us out. It takes away the ambiguity and the constant back and forth and even getting state's attorneys involved when we do have an ordinance, especially one that the committee's looked at and then both the commission and the board have approved. It definitely helps staff and does save considerable amount of time.
Thank you.
Refresh my memory, I guess, road districts. You just mentioned that. I mean, are the road districts responsible for the signs in the road districts? Is that gonna be kind of a little bit of complication as far as administering?
Right now, when there's plating and everything going on, we do, you know, require them to install road signs, but it's nowhere in writing, really. I mean, the plating does, I mean, they can do conditions and stuff, but really, they could hire Joe Schmo to go out and put a road sign up, and it wouldn't be to the standards. If somebody hit it, it wouldn't, you know, who knows what would happen. And so then it would be the road district's responsibility to put up, to, you know, maintain the signs, but we don't have anything in the writing, so...
But if we, if we went ahead like with the ordinance, those last version, I mean, would the county be responsible for replacing signs in that in the road district or is that the road district's responsibility at that point?
That's one question that we need to answer with county highways, decide if county highway, if the road district pays county highway to go and install the signs, if they give permission to county highway, if they hire, you know, a sign company and county highway inspects the sign to make sure it was installed correctly. Those are just all these questions that we need to iron out.
And it's a perfect example of what could take so much time, because one question comes up and then it's back and forth between multiple departments, back and forth with road district, and then you have an understanding and something gets done, but there's nothing in writing for it to happen the next time. You just say, well, in the past, we've done, and this just helps put it in writing.
I agree. I mean, I think it does take time for naming roads. I ran into a situation where, I live on Starlight Drive, well, when they were building out Rapid Valley and they had Moonlight and Sunrise and all that, they wanted Starlight spelled differently out there. Well, the Starlight I live on in town was in the county when it was built and named by the county Starlight, but it was almost approved before I brought it up. And so it does take some research time to make sure you don't have those duplicate names or, not duplicate, but I mean, spell different, sound the same.
And Ted, Ted is very diligent now about that type of thing. Even in surrounding counties, he won't allow like road names, so...
I still get the situation, just because they are Moonlight and, you know, that whole series, that kind of subgroup. I get delivery people going out to Rapid Valley, and I live on the west side of town.
Yep. Yeah.
So what are you looking for from us? Are you looking for a motion to go ahead with development of an ordinance?
Right.
My opinion, I think if you're gonna do a road naming ordinance, you should include signage. I think it's, I think it would be bad not to.
And should it all be a separate or all together?
It should all be in one place. I don't know. It's my opinion.
Okay.
I'm sure when Kelsey goes forward with this with the committee, she's gonna include the other departments that she's already spoken with, and also open it up to a commissioner. If anybody from the planning commission would like to sit on it, leave it up to you.
But then I also looked at our to-do list from 2014, and that was not one of the higher priorities. Just for comment.
It is now for different staff.
I would agree with Lyndell that the first step would just be to see what other counties are doing and seeing if we can piggyback on something that's already been done.
Right.
How often do you get requests for road naming?
When I came, after I came back from maternity leave, I had, let's see...
We've seen three or four.
I had four of them right away when I came back from maternity leave, and then there was a fifth one that was with a plat and...
How many a year?
Yeah, normally, I've only seen a couple a year, but this year, I've already done five, so... And I have one that's waiting for approval from Ted right now, so...
Would somebody like to make a motion?
The motion you're looking for is just to proceed or not to proceed?
Right, right. Do you want me to spend my time, some time going through this and researching and everything?
I would make a motion to proceed with pursuing a road naming and that same section to have the signage.
Okay.
And as a first step to first investigate what other counties are doing before we spend a lot of time, so...
There a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to direct staff to continue working on road naming and road name signage draft ordinance. Further discussion? and road name signage draft ordinance. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Kelsey. Item 12.
Item 12 is a comprehensive plan amendment. Basically, the memo that I put in there is just a quick update. On June 22nd, Planning Commission approved the review of Pennington County's comprehensive plan at future meetings with today's July 27th being the first. Staff, just some items possibly for discussion. What is the focus going to be from the Planning Commission? How would you like to proceed? Possible guidelines, timelines, goals, just simple stuff like that. But I know Planning Commissioners probably have some items of, they'd like to discuss, so I'll leave it open to you to discuss.
Any comments on the comprehensive plan?
Would you remind me when, what was the date of the last comprehensive plan?
The date?
Yeah.
2003.
2003.
Correct. And it's recommended to be updated every seven to 10 years.
I stopped in the commission office last week and they have, they found a copy of the comprehensive plan for Pennington County that was completed in 1969, I believe.
It's very good.
And it's actually...
Better than this one.
It is so much better than the one we have right now. It is much more comprehensive, it's much more detailed, some of it is outdated. But, you know, it gave me an idea of what a comprehensive plan could actually look like. I would encourage you guys, I mean, it's a big honking thing.
Three books.
I would encourage you guys to, how many copies do you have in the office? Three?
Two.
Two more copies?
Can you scan them?
I'm sorry?
Can you scan them and distribute them electronically?
Absolutely.
It's three volumes.
It's three volumes. I mean, it's a...
Oh, golly.
Collect the whole set.
That would be a day of work for you.
We just found that in the filing cabinet.
And you have all the updates?
We possibly do.
So you said normally it would be updated every five years?
Seven to 10.
Seven to 10 is recommendation.
Or as needed. Some places need them more.
Well, one of the, if we proceed down that road, and I, I think we should, but I think one of the things we've talked about, and I think that's one of the first steps, is to kind of identify the different zones. I mean, we've talked about that before. We got the hills, we got the municipalities, and we got, you know, the east side of the county. And it, and it's totally different and yet our ordinances attack everything as being the same. And I think the comp plan should address the differences and, and different rules that should apply.
Yeah, one side certainly does not fit all.
Yes, staff agrees.
I have, I have no idea.
It was prepared by a company in Spearfish.
Yeah, it was, it was prepared outside the county. It wasn't prepared by staff.
My understanding of the comprehensive plan is that it, it's a guide for the vision of the, the commission as to where they're, foresee the county going. I think my, my question would also include, okay, how has that changed since this version to where we're at now? Has, has the vision of the county growing or the, how we perceive the county growing, has that changed considerably from what we, and, and how it has changed?
That's a fair question. So how can, I mean, the question here is how can we go forward if we're going to take responsibility for this project, which I believe we more or less said we were going to do? How can we, as six non-planning professionals, manage this project? And five county commissioners, so I guess 11 people. Is, is that a reasonable expectation? And if so, how are we going to do that? And I think that's what PJ is looking for, right? A plan forward?
Right. I didn't know if you wanted to go through it item by item, almost similar to how the Vacation Home Rental Committee is doing that ordinance, or if you want to just discuss the feasibility of Planning Commission going through it and then make a recommendation either for or against a change in the comprehensive plan to the Board of Commissioners.
Well, because basically it comes down to the county, the county commissioners are not going to, they're not going to budget for an update.
We don't know that yet.
Well, it sounds to me like they've said no many times.
They have said no a few times.
They haven't, well, okay, they haven't said yes.
Yeah. We don't have a definitive answer at this time from them.
Well, because, I mean, because they don't see, again, they think it's an expensive process that they don't see much value in. And so if we, and you guys as a staff, think it's an important thing to do, we need to develop a good argument.
And I believe that was exactly the goal.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's why we as a group need to come to some consensus, because we haven't been able to sell it.
Correct.
Right?
It seems to me that part of, part of the issue with the comprehensive plan is that depending on how it's done, it can provide an enormous amount of direction and cover, political cover for the existing commission. I think there are a lot of people in the county who really very much believe that they should be able to do whatever they want with their own property. But when they consider, if they would consider, you know, what would happen if their neighbor put in a, a contained animal feeding operation, or a strip club, or, you know, something that they wanted to do with their property that was objectionable to them, they would understand that there is a place for planning and zoning. And zoning, the whole zoning process really does go back to the plan. If you don't have a plan, then you might as well let everybody do exactly what they want with their property, because there's no limitation set anywhere, or even guidance set anywhere.
And to back up your statement, I think it's evident, you know, just in, with the ordinance and the comp plan we have now, I mean, think of the contentious items that you're seeing now with a comprehensive plan. Imagine one without one. You know, cell towers or roller coasters, feedlots, animal care facilities, daycares with no control, with no control, other than how does a commissioner feel that day to vote for or against it?
Right.
And is that going to be consistent?
Exactly.
And if that inconsistency does exist, if there's nothing to fall back on from a guiding principle, how does that put the county at risk legally?
You know, just like you're saying, to me, it's a guiding principle and it's a living reading document, but, and then the ordinances follow your guidelines. I think we're almost kind of doing it backwards, which we just did with the signs, but we're, we're doing ordinances first without having the guiding principle.
Right.
Yes.
And there are ordinances that need to be adjusted and improved, absolutely, but the bigger picture is the comp plan.
Right.
Madam Chair? I have two comments. One is that if a comprehensive plan is either reviewed, which seems more likely, or it's decided to make a new one, I think it's important to know who this is going to serve, because the documents that I've been given from the department and the research I've done on the internet concerning comprehensive plans seems that they serve government rather than serving the people. And even your comments have said that it's, this is for political protection. And I, I like to have a focus on serving the people of the county.
Sure.
And keep their best interests in mind. And my second comment is that here we have a comprehensive plan that is, let's see, 2003, so it's 12 years old. And in the document you gave us, PJ, it recommended doing one of these every 30 years, not every five years or...
Was that my specific recommendation or somebody else's words?
That was in this one that you gave.
Somebody else's words?
I can't, I can't find it because I didn't underline it, but I remember reading that. And it's routinely ignored, routinely. We do it every single meeting. Variances and ignoring and, and we look at the maps. So I, I have to wonder how useful it is, other than, as you said, protection for government entities.
If I may. Commissioner Lambs, to address your first item, if you've read through the documents and know about the Rapid City Plan, the public is involved through almost every single step and their opinions and what they want are taken into account, whether they're, whether they're followed through with.
Not what my comment was. I said, who does this serve?
Right, but you had also mentioned that the public's interests need to be taken into account, and they are. Now, your second item, as far as the 30 years in that packet that you received, are varying opinions from different people, not just one pro opinion from the, from the staff. We're trying to be as open as possible to other agencies' opinions on comprehensive plans as well.
I think one of the opportunities that we have, if we do choose to go forward with a revision or a redo of the comprehensive plan, is to manage the county differently. Like Sig said, we have a lot of, of ordinance that applies now to the eastern part of the county. That's crazy. I mean, it shouldn't apply to them. Their concerns are different, their, their distance to the aquifer is hugely different. I mean, to have them subdivide a, a piece of property that's 30,000 acres so that they can put a residence, if a kid wants to move home or onto the ranch, that's crazy. You know, there are lots and lots of things that we could do in a comprehensive plan to take the load off of the eastern part of the county, but still maintain some kind of protections for the environment of the hills. So I see some value there. I also see value in letting the county's citizens have input in how they want their county developed. If we try to do it as a body with the six of us and the five commissioners, you know, I know there's some people on this commission who believe that if the, all the four-lane roads should have, should be commercial in the hills, because that's where the tourists go. And not everybody on this commission will agree with that. So, you know, are we the right people to be doing this, I think is one of the fundamental questions we need to answer.
We're certainly not the wrong people.
Well, we're not planning professionals, however.
Does this require professional or does it require common sense? That's a question. I'm not answering my own question.
Well, I don't know how many of you participated in the Rapid City comp plan update. They had open houses. Very, very few members of the public actually participate in that. Yeah, sure, it's open to the public, but really, these documents are for government entities. They're what, they're what government officials use as a guideline. The public doesn't, yeah, the public has input on them, but the public doesn't know what's in them and doesn't really, I wouldn't say care. But I think, I think just from looking at the current plan that was prepared by the commission, by staff and the commission members, and one that was prepared by a consultant, you see when a consultant does it, you get tons and tons of detail. You see when the county does it, you get, you get minimal guidelines. I mean, what do you want? I'd rather look at this than that. I mean, as long as it's, as, as long as the information in here is valid and current. I mean, as long as it's descriptive of what's going on now and what you want to happen in the county. I'd rather do this than three volumes of that.
I, I guess, Barb respectfully disagrees with you. You're saying it's not, you know, who's it serve? I think it is serving the people. I don't want a feedlot next to me. I think, you know, that kind of comment, and that's got to come through some government control.
You know, you misconstrued. I, mine was a question, who does this serve?
I think it does serve the residents, in my opinion.
And, and in terms of what Commissioner has said, yeah, people aren't interested. Comprehensive plan is pie in the sky, you know? Oh, they're making a new comprehensive plan. Until somebody comes in here and it affects them, of course, they're not interested, because it seems too abstract to the public as a whole. And I would agree that the simpler it is, the better it is, especially because it's routinely ignored.
Well, I think it's routinely ignored because we haven't updated it. If we updated it and addressed the different issues of, you know, the different parts of the county and all that, and had a master guideline for that, we wouldn't be ignoring so much.
We had a master guideline and it, it's working poorly for the last 12 years.
Right, but it was written by one staff member, literally, by one guy, with very little input from anybody else. And honestly, there's a lot of stuff, I mean, there's PUD sensitive, which is, a lot of the county is zoned PUD sensitive, and it's not even defined in the comprehensive plan. We don't even know what that means.
There's, I had another thing copied. I think we've all heard in the news that the federal government is coming and they're going to be doing their own zoning laws, and that's going to affect us. And hopefully, this doesn't get implemented, but I think that we need to consider that this is waiting in the wings and may negate anything we do anyway. So I just, I have looked at the HUD document. It's a scary piece of work, fairly large, as most of those documents are. This is just an article I pulled out so I could present it to the rest of you.
So we're looking for a direction forward.
PJ, in your, your staff work, how often do you go back to the comprehensive plan and look at things in that, rather than the zoning ordinances that, to make your recommendations from? I mean, actually go back to the plan itself rather than a zoning...
When rezones come in, the comprehensive plan amendments, that's, those maps are on the computer now, so we don't have to open up the physical document. And our ordinances are based off of the comprehensive plan as of 94. So opening the actual document to read it, because it's represented in other places, very rarely, because everything else is built off of that.
The maps and everything, or you use the maps and whatnot?
We have Rapid Map now, which is, and a GIS, which is more current, because when it changes, the paper maps aren't going to change.
Right.
But online maps will change. So open up the physical document very rarely, but just because it's represented in so many other places as the building block.
So when, when you open Rapid Map...
Uh-huh.
In those areas where the county and the city have joint jurisdiction, it shows the city use, correct? Or does it show both?
We can do both. Zoning...
You can do both then, okay.
Well, inside city, we're not going to get any county zoning. Yeah. I can actually open it up if you want to see it.
Well, no, I just, I was just curious. So you just pull whatever overlay you want then?
Yeah.
For this joint jurisdiction stuff?
Yes.
So the maps, you, the maps are relatively current then, I mean?
There's a whole department over in the city that runs the GIS, which then updates the Rapid Map. There's also a couple of staff members, or one actually, in Department of Equalization that does the lot lines. But as far as rezonings and things like that, road names, the detail that comes off the ARC GIS into Rapid Map, our staff is actually going to be trained this week, I believe, from Don, to do the rezoning ourselves, because there's a lot that come in, because the current zoning isn't working for what's happening out there. That's another reason for the comprehensive plan. So staff is going to take that burden off of that one person.
And that's, that was a question I've had for some time as to how, how you're keeping the maps up to date. When we take, at the meetings, we keep changing, make changes to the comprehensive plan, but we're actually taking change to the map, period.
Right. They were changed by staff originally. Staff has since, one of those staff is not with the department anymore. Kelsey is the other one that was trained in doing it, but she's got so many other things. So Rapid City, actually over the past year, has really helped us out, keeping things as current as we can. So once Jerry's done scanning our documents into the computer, then a list will go over to Don and they'll update it. Most recently, I think that was done, what, a couple of weeks ago? Yep.
So... Commissioner?
Several years ago, I asked the Planning Department, do you keep a list of problems that keep reoccurring? And at the time, this is a ways back, one of the staff members said yes. And it was, never went any further than that, but the kinds of problems I'm thinking of, we, we've dealt with here recently, is suction lines. lines. And we have one problem with South Valley Drive, where the city developed a section line and paved the road down to the bypass, and now all of a sudden, they aren't taking care of a portion of it because it's not annexed. And we have another section line where a private individual has chosen to maintain a certain level of road to his property, happens to go by another person's driveway, and there's been an ongoing argument, and you know what I'm talking about. And then when, out on Moon Meadows, Leo Hamm and his right-of-way problem in the section line, those are the kinds of things that either need a change in state law or something so that you aren't constantly going over and over and over a basic problem with different details. And that's not something that you will accomplish with a comprehensive plan. I agree completely with the chair talking about eastern Pennington County. A site, when you get about so far away from the interstate highway, either direction north or south, the density is becoming negative instead of positive. There are farmsteads deserted, fallen down, and the operators are at some point saying, this isn't worth fixing anymore. We're just going to build us a modular home and keep farming or ranching. So there are different challenges. And I, I think to minimize the impact of government on those people is, is a worthy goal.
To follow up on that, even some to the western side of the county as well, and when people come in and staff looks at it and goes, well, sorry, you know, this is what the ordinance says we have to do. We can't waive that for you, though it makes perfect sense. You still have to go before Commissioner or the board to get that waived. And if we can do away with that, I think that would make the public happier.
So may I continue?
Yes, please.
If, if a comprehensive plan in some way laid out the parameters, if the property and the area meets these standards, this applies. If it meets these standards, these apply. You know, density and all, and terrain and soil conditions. The issue of unstable soil has certainly been brought forward lately, and it's very unfortunate, but someone needs to protect people from themselves, I guess, in, in that regard.
Adam Chair?
Yes.
I, I agree absolutely with both of you that the more rural parts of our county need to be given relief from some of these ordinances. But what I'm hearing from the discussion is that, at least at this point, the best thing that we need is a review of the current plan and perhaps some changes to that before one jumps off into just completely redoing the whole plan.
I guess, you know, I, I feel like almost any company or organization has a mission statement, and that's, to me, what a comp plan is. It's a mission statement. I mean, you know, I've thrown a couple of meetings, or, you know, some, you know, some things I've seen other places where you got egg reserve, you know, or do, as a county, do we want forest reserve? Where, whether it's private or US Forest Service, do you say, you know, you can't build a, you know, 2,000 unit, housing unit up in the forest? You know, I, I don't think that this county's going to go that way, but I mean, you know, that's a possibility, and, and it has happened in places where it just sort of like, no, you know, the, you know, you're going to have a big subdivision? It's part of a community. It's not a, you know, isolated, you know, housing area in the middle of the hills and taking away that aspect of the hills. That's what I, you know, to me, the comp plan does, it provides those guidelines and like we're talking about for eastern part, you know, you, you get a guideline to go by instead of just one rule covers all and then we have to do variances all the time. I agree, we've got way too many variances, you know, and ignoring things, so.
And that has been said many times during meetings, why we have so many variances. Well, it goes back to the comp plan. We'll change the comp plan, well, that's what we're presenting again.
Right. So PJ, what are you looking for from us? Are you looking for?
I actually really liked the discussion. I liked the difference of opinion. I think, I know the goal, and Sig, correct me if I'm wrong, was for the Planning Commission to actually review.
Yeah, I think that's a motion we had, if I recall, is basically start section by section, just stepping through it.
Yep.
If you, if I may?
Yes, please.
Taking what you have now and analyzing it is one thing, but if, if, if you agree on some basic things like the rural areas and you make it, put them into segments and have an action plan for that segment, this is what we want to accomplish. And seek to slide over or eliminate ordinances that do or don't apply to that segment. Would that be an approach?
It would. It would narrow down what we would need to do, and it brings everything into play, not just a comp plan.
Madam Chair, I, I finally, fully, I hope fully understand what Sig and Lindell have, have said, that the, the comprehensive plan is this overall big, you know, goal for the whole county, and segmenting the county and addressing each segment seems to be a much more logical approach.
And staff's in favor of that since the beginning, since, you know, since the first time Commissioner Peterson has mentioned that, or other commissioners have mentioned that. You know, staff would love to see it improved. There's a lot of things out there that can be changed. There's different things we can do within the one-mile septic jurisdiction, the three-mile plating, which can be different from, you know, we could go out that way, or the rural areas. There's all these ideas that are out there from different board members, commission members, that without changing the comprehensive plan, can't really be installed or established.
And I would think, I mean, it doesn't need to be a 500-page document. To me, you know, like, I quoted again, the mission statement. A mission statement is typically one to three sentences, you know? I, I'm not expecting only three sentences for the whole county, but I mean, I, you know, I agree with Laurie too, is if it gets too overly burdensome or too thick, you're not going to have anybody use it.
Well, it seems to me that if we're in agreement that, that we need to look at the different parts of the county in different ways, in terms of the vision forward, that it then becomes a matter of one person power and two, time. If we choose as a body to do this looking, I'm not sure that our regular commission meetings would be the appropriate time to do that.
It would take years.
It would take forever to do that, yeah. Laurie's? Right. So that would mean, you know, convening committees to look at different parts of the county and make recommendations. And I'm wondering if you commissioners would be willing to do that. That's one option. Another option would be to recommend to the board, county board, that we hire somebody in the department to manage this project. And it couldn't be a planner one. It would have to be somebody with pretty, I would say, pretty significant experience to manage a comprehensive plan revision.
You mean, bring somebody in?
Yeah.
Like for a two or three-year stint?
Yeah, right. Or to look at hiring somebody else, somebody outside the county to do it. Or the last option is to kick the can down the road, but I would recommend we not do that again.
One, one of the, one approach that we could possibly do, think about, is we as a body can, could more, more or less subdivide the county as we perceive it. It would be segregated for the different demographics. And we could take what we've considered to be the, the easiest to review and?
And try?
And work, work that issue, that one segment, and if that worked out well, we could move on to the next one with experiencing that first bit of information and, and tasking. And undoubtedly, when you get to the hills area, the, up in, that's going to be the most tedious and, and time-consuming to get involved in.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Laurie?
I think we should form a committee to develop a recommendation, because we don't have a clear recommendation. I mean, and I think in order to do that, we have to have a group that can focus on the plan, understand the plan, see what's missing, see what can go, see what needs to be updated, to make a recommendation to the county board. That's what I think. I don't know. And we're not going to get it done in our meetings, our regular two-week meetings. What do you think about that plan?
Just as a kind of kickoff, do we want to start with maybe at just one of our meetings to, just a general, start, you know, opening up our current plan and just?
Walking through it?
Just walking through the, basically introductory chapter to, as a, to kind of get the thought process going. I don't know, just a thought, but.
Just keep in mind, this isn't just a comprehensive plan. This is also the flood ordinance, the water ordinance, septic ordinance, all of our ordinances. Everything comes into play in this, because you can't just change a comprehensive plan without updating everything else.
The plan's the guideline.
I'm sorry? It's the guideline, yes, but you want it to, you're also going to look at adjusting the other ordinances that we have. It's like changing out an engine, putting old hoses back in. They're going to blow eventually, so you change everything out.
I mean, I don't think it's, I don't think it's unrealistic to, as an assignment before our next meeting, each of us read it in detail and have a suggestion on how to proceed?
I?
I mean, I think we talked about that before.
I agree with?
And if we put it on the agenda, then we're forced to say, oh, I didn't read it, I don't know, you know?
I agree with your suggestion, Laurie, and also adding what has been discussed here, suggestions for how we could divide the county into districts. You know, where is probably a better word rather than how.
You mean, like, looking at maps?
Yeah.
Specifically?
Yeah. Just for clarification, so going over every parcel and deciding what it should be zoned? In what district?
No, I'm, I'm looking at big areas.
Kind of like how the commissioners have different areas and then breaking it up and then dividing it between the planning commission to look at those specific areas?
Open to discussion.
Oh, yes, I thought you were talking about, like, you know, just kind of start off kind of grossly, just saying, okay, anything east of Box Elder is?
Yeah, that's kind of.
Going to be in this district.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, this is kind of gross.
Wall's another one.
Yeah? Anyway, but I mean, yeah, just, you got to start somewhere, it's kind of a gross overview.
Yeah, first deciding, do we need, not one district or three, I mean, you know?
Or six.
Or, yeah.
I like the discussion.
What, what do you think of that, Commissioner Peterson?
I, I think it's all right, but one of the things that I think is particularly important is that the staff feels free to say, hey, guys, that won't, that won't work. Here's why. You know, and there's no use going down a blind alley more than once.
I, I have no problem doing that. I think you know that by now.
How, how about we do this? Let's, for our next meeting, let's all read the comp plan carefully, try and identify where it's deficient and, you know, why it's deficient. And at the same time, let's all raise our hands now. Who would like to be on a committee to work with staff to sort of get a plan for moving forward? That'll give us something to do for next meeting, and then the committee, I don't think, will probably be finished with a recommendation by our next meeting, but, you know, that'll get us moving forward.
I would almost like to see the discussion on, at the next meeting after everyone takes a hard look at the comp plan and then go to the committees.
And then convene, convene a committee after that? Okay, that'll, that'll work.
Do we need a motion for that? Or it's just?
We can just put it on the agenda.
We just do.
If you're okay with that, Barbara?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so everybody's going to read the existing plan?
Does everybody have a copy of it? I know Barbara does, Laurie does.
We all do.
You don't, let me know, I'll get you one. We'll check with Jim, make sure he has one.
Yeah, it is online as well. Okay, are we good with that?
Good discussion, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, on to item 13, county board report.
Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the July 13, 2015 Planning Commission meeting with the exception of telecommunication facility permit TC 1501, Cellar Incorporated Networking Corp., Orion Wireless, Brian Cabot, Buell Consulting as the agent. This item was appealed and will be heard at the August 18, 2015 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Interesting. Items from the public? Can I ask a question? You said it's going to be heard at the August 18 county board meeting?
Correct, it was appealed.
Because I thought you said if it was appealed, it came back to us. No?
That was, that was what we discussed that day, and then we, was to determine that it doesn't get reheard due to the tie.
Okay.
It gets treated as an appeal.
Okay, all right, sorry.
I'm sorry, good to clarify.
No items from the public, or are there items from staff?
We have one that's not on there. Rex Backroll is no longer in our office. He actually accepted a job over at the Department of Equalization. So we've already opened recruitment, it's been open for a week, our planning one and our ordinance officer, and we've had, have some very highly qualified candidates for our ordinance officer and for our planning commission, our planning, Planner One position. Interviews for those won't be conducted until after rally week.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about the VHR committee?
Sure. The biggest thing about vacation home rentals, and again, they are only a recommending body and a review body. They have recommended to put vacation home rentals in suburban residential with conditional use permits. That was a considerable amount of discussion at the meeting. Other changes to the ordinance are just minor verbiage changes, possibly, instead of calling them vacation home rental, to be more consistent with what the state does and call them vacation home establishments, and that is defined in state statute. What they have recommended to do is call it vacation home rental slash establishments, which, as we go through this review, it'll be interesting to see how that rental slash establishment directs the ordinance itself because of the definition of vacation home establishments. I had to leave early, is there anything else I'm missing from that? Nope? Okay. But that was the putting SRD, allowing VHRs in SRD through a conditional use permit, that was the biggest change, which would take out a page and a half of the ordinance if that happened.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Are there any items from membership? Are there none? Can entertain a motion for adjournment?
It's been moved.
Second. Been moved, it we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Commissioner.